Okay, it's six o'clock actually. Yeah, it's still six on my phone. So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. A regular meeting of the Temecula Planning Commission. And if we can have Commissioner Hagel lead us in a flag salute, that would be great.
Put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagel. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hagel.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz is absent tonight. Commissioner Trecio.
Here.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Here.
And Commissioner Watts.
Here.
Okay, public comment. I'll go ahead and read this since we're going to, we might not be here that long tonight anyhow. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the planning commission on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For any public hearing item on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting by the commission secretary. Email comments must be submitted to StuartFisk@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Email comments shall be subject to the same rules as would otherwise govern in-person public comments. Do we have any public speakers? Okay. I will then move ahead with the next item on the calendar, Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the planning commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. And there's been no request to do that. So on our consent calendar, we have just the minutes from our last meeting of January 5th, 2022. Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hagel, seconded by Commissioner Trecio. All those in favor?
Aye. I'll say aye even though I wasn't here because I read them.
Okay. Very good. That's a unanimous four to zero vote. And our next item on the agenda is public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the planning commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge the project in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the planning commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. Item number two is long-range planning project number one, number L, R18-1620, the 2021-2029 housing element update six cycle. Could we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Tonight, we're back to present the revised housing element. Just for the public's information, in case they're watching online or watching meeting archives, we want to make sure that everyone understands there is a more in-depth presentation. This is the second time we're giving this presentation. It's unnecessary to go through the entire presentation, so we've truncated it for this hearing, but the full set of hearings, public meetings, archive of everything, videos, everything, is available at temeculaca.gov/housing. So if the public wants to dive in more to understand some of the background and history in the process, it's available there for the in-depth presentation. With that, I'm going to introduce Kelly from De novo Consulting. She's stepping in for a man tonight who's actually presenting another housing element at another city tonight, so she'll be doing a majority of the presentation. I'll rejoin everybody at the end.
Do I need to press? There we go. All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name's Kelly Hickler. I'm a senior planner with De novo Planning Group, and we've prepared your housing element for you. So I'm just here to give you an update on the comments that were received from HCD and how we responded to those. So here's an outline of the presentation tonight. We're going to review the housing element requirements and the timeline, review the comment letter from HCD, review the staff recommended changes to the draft housing element. Then Brandon will talk about the general plan, final EIR addendum. And finally, we'll end by adopting a resolution, making a recommendation to the city council. So as you know, the, there's a requirement, the general plan includes a housing element. There's a certification process that needs to happen. And of course, there's penalties if you don't meet the state law requirements and have a certified housing element. So a draft housing element was submitted to HCD and a letter was received from them with required revisions. And this is a timeline just to go over how we got to where we are today and where we are, where we're going. So last year, January through August was the preparation of the draft housing element, then followed by a 30-day public review period. There was a community open house in August. Planning Commission saw the draft housing element on September 15th of last year. Then it was submitted to HCD for their 60-day review. City Council adopted the draft housing element on October 12th. The statutory deadline was October 15th. Then we received HCD comments on that draft housing element on December 3rd. That brings us to tonight, our planning commission public hearing on the revised housing element. And then February 8th is scheduled for the city council public hearing. So the next two slides are just reminder slides. These are, these are all things that you've seen before, so there's kind of a refresher of the city's role in providing their regional housing allocation. So the, the number that was given to the city was 4,193 units, and here's the breakdown of how those are being provided. You could see that 50% of those are dedicated to either very low or low-income households. And this slide is just an explanation of how those are defined and the types of residents of the city that would fall into those income categories. So very low income, which is 0 to 50% of the area median income, about $19 an hour would be, you know, maybe a preschool teacher or a grocery store worker, et cetera. Low income, about $31 an hour, maybe a starting teacher, firefighter, different military personnel, et cetera. And then moderate income would be, you know, maybe someone like an accountant. I'd be curious to see where City Planner falls on here. Okay, so this slide is getting into the revised RENA strategy based on the comments from HCD. So there's an asterisk there at the bottom that really, the, the two changes were some modifications to the ADU assumptions. So I think originally, the projected ADU numbers were 144 units. HCD said they wanted us to use their methodology to calculate those, so that brought it down to 48 units, ADU units. And then the remainder of the lower amount of units was due to the way they wanted us to round it. But you can see that the city still is providing a surplus, and that revised surplus column at the total, it's 53, 13, so you're still providing more than the RENA required number. Then this is just a refresher of the site inventory map. So none of the sites were changed. This is the exact same map. This is just a refresher of what that map looks like. And then we'll get into the, the HCD comments. So these were kind of the four categories of comments that they had on the affirmatively furthering fair housing, say that five times fast, requirements, the sites inventory, analysis of constraints to housing, and then implementation of housing programs sections. So I'll go through each one of those. So these were their, well, these are not their comments. These are our response to their comments that they gave us, and I believe the planning commission has seen the letter from, from HCD and is familiar with the, with what the comments were. So this is our response to those. So we updated the, the fair housing section to provide more information on enforcement and outreach activities. We provided a comprehensive local and regional analysis of fair housing issues, including areas of concentration by race, disability, familial status, income, and affluence. We provided a local and regional analysis of access to opportunity in relation to education, economy, transportation, and environmental factors. We expanded our analysis of factors related to households with disproportionate housing needs such as cost burden, risk of displacement, overcrowding. We better connected the sites inventory to demonstrate that RENA sites are distributed throughout the city in a manner that furthers fair housing. And finally, we added or modified some of the housing plan policies to address the state fair housing requirements. For the sites inventory, this is a few slides ago, the, the table that I went over with the ADU numbers. This is just a little bit more explanation about that. So we included additional information on the progress of affordable housing projects, either approved or entitled but not yet under construction. And there was these two developments that we included in there. Clarified that sites identified to meet RENA are vacant. We provided support for realistic residential capacity assumptions. Clarified the zoning and/or added programs to address state requirements for housing types such as emergency shelters, transitional supportive housing, et cetera. Then we revised the ADU projections per the, the state's methodology. They call it safe harbor methodology, which is six units per year. And then we demonstrated availability of infrastructure and addressed potential environmental constraints of identified sites. Then the analysis of constraints to housing section, we expanded our analysis of governmental constraints to housing production such as land use controls, parking requirements, calculation of fees, processing permitting procedures, reasonable accommodation procedures. We expanded the analysis of non-governmental constraints as well. So things like added to the estimate of land and construction costs, availability of financing, and expeditious building permitting. We also expanded on the strategy to retain affordable units at risk of expiring within the decade. Right? And then implementation of housing programs, clarified timelines, the objectives, and the city's role in implementation for the programs. Revised housing program to update the zoning code, comply with state requirements for emergency shelters, other types of supportive housing. Added Program 18, which provides adequate sites for lower-income households on non-vacant and vacant sites identified in prior planning periods. We modified Program 8 to better address needs of large ELI households. We added Program 19 to mitigate non-governmental constraints and modified the fair housing programs and added Program 28 to commit to fair housing outreach, enforcement, and And there's some other items that didn't really fit neatly into those other categories were to update Appendix C, which is the explanation of the public outreach process to demonstrate that there was meaningful bilingual public participation throughout. And also added a review of the city's cumulative efforts to address the needs of special needs populations, low-income elderly, persons with disabilities, et cetera. And that brings us to CEQA. I'll turn it over to Brandon.
Much like the last time we were here, in compliance with Section 15164, an addendum was prepared to the general plan EIR. This specific update includes the housing element. The public safety element was already previously approved. We're not touching the safety element again, but none of the conditions exist in Secret Guidelines, Section 15162 are present to require the preparation of a subsequent EIR and no additional environmental review is required. With that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the adoption of the updated housing element based on HCD's findings. Staff and the consultant are available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions of staff? Or do you want to take a minute to read this letter we just got? I assume this just came in? This letter?
It came in at about 4:30, apparently. Yeah, this afternoon.
Well, that's what I was, I wasn't meaning to write this minute.
Yeah.
Late. Okay.
Yes.
So just for the record, there was a letter from Mitchell Sci dated January 19, 2022 that has been distributed to the planning commission for their review. The letter did have three attachments, which were pretty substantial in document size. So those, we didn't have time to make copies of, you know, the 400 pages. So all of this, though, will be part of the record that will be submitted to the city council, who, as you know, is the ultimate approving body. This is just the recommending body. So that will all be part of the public record that will be considered by the city council.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Everybody had a chance to read it? Great. So we'll go ahead and resume. We're going to have questions of staff. We'll start down here with you, Bob. No? John has none.
I have several. Shocker. I know. Okay. So I don't know what helps you, but I'm kind of going through what I have. But this is something that I highlighted. The city will amend its municipal code, oh my gosh, municipal code to provide that supportive housing is, is a permitted use in all residential zones. So that hasn't been in the past.
That is correct. State law has changed, and so we are required as a part of one of our housing element programs to update our laws to comply with state law. So this will be a change coming forth to the planning commission and the city council.
So that means that that can happen anywhere in the city.
That is correct.
Wow. Okay. And then emergency shelters that are permitted in medium and high-density residential zones. And I noticed that there's two that we have, right, in our city? So can you explain that to me a little bit?
Yeah. So very similar to the previous question. State law is required that we update our standards, make sure that we're having compliance with state law. I believe we already took this forward in our previous code amendment that came forward probably about a month or, about a month ago, Maricela. Correct me if I'm wrong. So we already brought this forth knowing that these are some of the changes that they were going to require of us. So we have to develop standards that are in compliance with state law. They can't be anything above and beyond what similar standards are. And that's just one of the requirements. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Maricela?
No, just that those standards, because we are allowed to implement certain standards, those were what came with that code amendment, so that there can be standards that we impose on the emergency shelters.
Okay. Okay. And then another thing I highlighted was the city has identified 60 sites, all of which are vacant. And of these 60, 14 have been included in two prior housing elements. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah. So again, I'm sorry if I sound like a broken record. State law has changed to basically say that if you had some previous sites and they did not develop, the city has an obligation to ensure that they can develop, but they have to be developed with affordable housing if we're going to utilize them. They want certainty that these sites are going to develop so that we have to allow them by right versus having some special process or us rezoning and taking away those sites. The state's really looking that if you provide something in a housing element cycle and it is not producing housing after two cycles, you have to start providing evidence why it's not doing it and/or take action to make sure that housing does develop. And so again, we're required to do that. Maricela, do you have anything to add?
No, just it's, it's that ministerial type of approval where you won't, it won't come before the planning commission or city council. It'll be a ministerial approval of the project if it's been on, within those 60 sites that were identified. But that's only if they provide at least a 20% affordable. They've got to have that component in order to get that ministerial approval.
And then I have this identified by October 2022. Any specific geographic areas in the city which have higher levels of discrimination How are we doing that?
Yeah. So right now, we contract with Fair Housing Council of Riverside County. They provide us quarterly data. That quarterly data provides insights into what type of claims that may be occurring. It could be something like, I believe my landlord is discriminating against me by increasing my rent beyond state law. It could be that they believe they're being discriminated on some protected class. And so we get a data report on that. And what we would do as required as per the state and our housing element is we would take a look and see, is there a specific neighborhood that this is occurring? Is there education, maybe we need to work with real estate folks? And it could be something as, you know, small as maybe a real estate agent isn't showing someone in a wheelchair a certain type of housing because they believe that that isn't something they would be able to utilize for some reason, right? That's, that in itself is discriminatory. You can't discriminate someone against someone. So we would identify trends, things like that, and we would provide educational opportunities. So we could say, hey, we're going to hold a local real estate workshop, educating you on how to deal with special needs communities and how not to discriminate against them. Other things could occur if they're seeing trends with a particular property. Let's say it's a multifamily apartment complex. Fair Housing Council will actually come in and educate all their staff to make sure they're in compliance with state and federal law. This occurs regularly now, but this would just be more of a focused effort to make sure not, you know, not one specific neighborhood is having an issue.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Then I have a question on the TAP, Technical Assistance Panel. It says in here, the TAP will consider issues of fair housing holistically. What in the heck does that mean?
Great question. So what we did to have some synergy with some existing things that we, again, we already do these things. We have our CDBG program, which is our community development block grant program. And every year, we have an annual program where we're trying to invest funds in underserved communities. And so what we decided to do is merge this technical advisory panel and our CDV group because we're hearing from them regularly. This includes anything from domestic violence, homeless outreach, different organizations that support our community. And they would provide feedback on, hey, we're seeing this issue occur in our community. Can we provide funds or allocate CDBG funds in this direction to support these things? And so we do this every year. We're actually working on our five-year plan right now, which also includes our one-year plan. So we decided to merge those two things because we already have all these organizations in the same room, and why have a separate meeting? So our technical advisory panel and CDBG panels will be all in one, but they will all provide the same information in serving those that are underserved.
Okay. Thank you. And then I, I can't find it right now, but what, can you explain to me what the at-risk units are?
Yeah, great question. At-risk units are those that, their covenant, right? Their, their 55-year covenant in most cases is going to or likely will expire. So for instance, when an affordable housing project comes into the city, we put a 55-year covenant on there that says you can't charge above this area median income rent. So it could be 30%, 50%, 80%, or any range or mix of that. We have some developments that in the next 10 years, not the next eight, in the next 10 years will be at risk, meaning that they, those covenants could expire and they will again become market rate units. So the city, as we've done in the past, we will have strategies and try to protect those units from expiring so that all of a sudden, we're not losing units, right? We don't want to make a situation that's already difficult in the state of California worse. And so we have to identify and plan for how we're going to address at-risk units. In the past, we've been very successful. Mission Village, we resyndicated this last two years, Luke, if I'm correct? And we extended their covenants without really any city funds. We actually were able to work with them, extend the covenants, rehab them, put solar on them. So we try to use our strategies to extend the life of these covenants for the betterment of the community.
Okay. Thank you. And then it talked in here about sensitive Okay, thank you. And then, it talked in here about sensitive areas in the city.
There could be multiple references to that. Do you have a specific, there's multiple references to sensitive areas, so I want to make sure I'm answering that question correctly. Talking like High Fire, or?
Um, hang on, let me see. Oh, here we go. Um, says there are four census tracts that have been designated as sensitive communities that are at risk for displacement. Does that help?
Yeah, that, that helps quite a bit. So, sensitive areas could be, let's say, we have an older tract neighborhood in Temecula. It's coming up on the end of its lifespan for the housing unit. So, just, just assume it's forty years for a stick-built home in a tract neighborhood.
So, is that at risk also?
It's not necessarily at risk, but let's say that the city were to rezone that area. That community, it may have people that are lower income, or, again, underserved populations. They could be displaced if we were to rezone those entire neighborhoods and allow it to redevelop. The city's practices, we haven't rezoned existing single-family neighborhoods, and we've protected them, in fact. And so, we've moved our development to areas of the city that may need redevelopment, but they don't have existing residential development like Uptown. So, we just have to study it. We have to make sure that if we were to rezone anything in the future, we understand what that displacement risk is, and then have a strategy for addressing that.
Okay. All right, I think, just, and this isn't really a question, maybe it's a question, but since I've been on the Short Term Rental Subcommittee, I noticed in here that the number's been reduced to thirty units. Wow.
Yeah, we're very proud of that. Our code enforcement team has been working very hard.
Wow. From three fifty to thirty. That's awesome. Okay, I think.
Well, if you have more, we can come back. Could you, I have a couple. Could you go back to slide fourteen, please? Okay. Can you talk a little bit more about Program eighteen, Program eight, Program nineteen, Program twenty-eight?
So, eighteen, eight, and nineteen?
Well, all the ones that are listed there, and twenty-eight, because they don't tell me a whole lot. So, what, I need more detail on those.
All right, let's start with eighteen. How's that sound?
That's perfect.
Okay, so, eighteen is providing adequate sites for lower-income households on non-vacant and vacant sites identified in prior planning periods. So, that's actually similar to Chairperson Turley Trejo's question earlier. If we've used these sites in a previous cycle, we need to make sure that we have taken actions to make sure that they can develop in the future, particularly for those for low-income, affordable. So, again, as Maricela had mentioned, the twenty percent requirement for affordable on those sites would be a requirement if they wanted to develop them. So, that's, that's really the, the background on that. I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, Maricela?
Oh, that's, that's good.
Okay.
Program eight.
All right.
Now, Program nine.
Yeah. So, Program eight, so this is identif, a identified area with extremely large households that basically, Temecula has some households that we need lower-income housing, but it needs to be for a larger household size, right? So, it's not just a small household size, like, for instance, like a studio, right? A studio's not going to serve a family. It's just not going to work. But we may need to look at, as developments provide affordable housing, that they may have larger units. So, part of our obligation is to educate developers that we have an opportunity for this, as well as, when we're working with them, if city funds are involved, or there's a negotiation going on, we have the opportunity to support them and say, you know, we really want to see these types of units to address this particular area of concern.
So, ELI is extra-large?
I, I may be saying it wrong. It, I, I may be misphrasing it, so. Extra, extra-low, I'm sorry, extra-low income. There's a program for large, I'm sorry, this may be extremely low income, my bad on that. But there's also a program for, no, it is for large. It's, it is large. It's the large low income, sorry.
And what is the program?
The program is, is just that, is that we want to ensure that as we're negotiating new developments, right, so, like Los Haciendas, we put city funds in there, we're ensuring that we are bringing those types of units into the city, for very low-income, large households, so.
With no parking constraints whatsoever?
Yep, there's a lot of requirement, restraints on parking.
Brilliant. Okay, Program nineteen?
Yes. So, non-governmental constraints. So, for instance, let's say that there is something with a nonprofit or some other organization in the city that limits how housing is being developed, we need to address that. So, one thing that could have been included in that would have been short-term rentals, right? That's not a non-governmental constraint, but it's a barrier to housing. We can address that. It's a wide-open thing, and we're curious how the state responds to that particular program. But it's, it's anything that's non-governmental. Most constraints identified would be governmental. But a, a sample could be, like, interest rates. If interest rates are really high, that may be, how are we going to address that? Are we going to provide a low-interest development opportunity for developers? So, you'll see that interest rates is one that said, well, interest rates are near historic lows. So, that's an example of how a non-governmental constraint would be addressed.
You don't have to go into much detail. I'm just trying to connect all these dots, because there's a lot here. But would Altaire and the problem with mountain lions create a situation that would fit under this?
That would likely be a governmental constraint. So, the government-
That would be a governmental constraint.
Yeah, the state, you know, has a requirement, and that would definitely be that.
Okay, and Program twenty-eight, let me... Can you give me a little more, a little more fill-out on that one? What, what exactly are we doing with that?
Yeah, so, we talked a little bit briefly. I talked a little bit about fair housing, so discrimination on a protected class. And so, the historic practice has been fair housing. Make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity to, to access housing. The state has shifted and said, you no longer just need to have, you know, fair housing programs, you need to basically progress with fair housing, right? It can't be just status quo and, and not have things get worse. You need to progress these programs forward. So, again, we mentioned the example of the disability, someone being discriminated against with their disability. We need to further our programs to make sure that those things aren't occurring, and improve things. So, let's just say, we got a scorecard from Fair Housing Council, and they said, you had ten complaints this year. The state wants to start seeing eight complaints, six complaints, so that we're being proactive. We don't necessarily have a, a huge amount of control in that, but the state's saying we want to see progress, not just that we're addressing it.
Okay, so what I take away from that is, this thing is really just trying to divide and separate people by every income or every, every factor they can. So, anyhow, I think you guys have done a great job, considering what you were given. I mean, when I asked you about that letter, I was shocked when I read it. And I have had a lot of experience with governmental bureaucrats and their response to things. And I applaud you for, for having to deal with, with what they have done. So, any other questions before? Yeah, Mr. Hagel.
The, the word transitional and the word supportive is used related to housing in here. I just want to make sure that I understand. Could you describe what those two words are, are meaning in this context?
Transitional housing could be someone that's at risk of becoming homeless or transitioning out of homelessness. Generally, it's anywhere from zero to six months, where they'll be in that type of housing. Whereas, supportive housing is someone that may have transitioned out of homelessness, or, and they've got a, maybe a, a lower-income job, and supporting them more permanently. Maricela, I don't know if you had anything else to add to supportive?
I, I think you're right there, Brandon. So, transitional is really getting people off the streets into temporary housing. And supportive housing could be, it's, it's, it's semi-temporary or permanent, but it's, it's supported by services. So, there's either onsite counseling, or, or whatever they may need, but that's what supportive housing, it's semi-permanent or permanent.
So, this describes how we're helping, not where they're going to be placed. So, in other words, transitional housing could be in a hotel for six months, or three months, or whatever.
That's correct.
And so, it's a transitional program where we're providing certain services to help them go through that process.
Not necessarily the city, but an organization.
Right.
So, a nonprofit that's coming in, and they're providing those services. So, we're, we're part of making sure they have the support, whether it's city information, or what's our zoning, that, where is it allowed, those types of things.
Okay. The last question I have is, so, we, we have a, a site that is identified for affordable housing. We go through two cycles, and that site is not, not used for that purpose. We're required to do something more to make sure that that site gets used for that purpose. Since these are private corporations, we can't force somebody to do something. Are we required to do something beyond marketing-type of things?
So, it could be anywhere from marketing to holding, rezoning in the future. It could be something along those lines, or the state could tell us, you can't use those sites anymore, because they're not viable. I, I'll say this. The city of Temecula, in every scenario, we have contributed to housing in the state of California. And so, when we look at this and as we discuss the fourteen-page letter, we remind them of that every opportunity we have. We've approved housing, we've rezoned, we've added additional housing. And so, when a site doesn't develop, because the market has determined that it can't develop, that is not the city's fault. We provided the opportunity, but the market did not decide to do that. And it could be the private property owners trying to get too much money out. It's the prices too high. There's a lot of factors. And that's, that's one of the frustrating things, right, during this process, is we don't have a lot of control over that. So, we're doing our part, but that is definitely the case. It is the private market that determines this. We do not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, my question kind of goes along with Bob's, um, on the transitional and supportive housing. So, is there more that we're having to do in that area than what we're doing already?
Short answer is yes. That's why we had approved the municipal code amendments recently to that, to allow it. And the state has said, you can't have additional regulations on these above a certain threshold. And so, we are limited on what we can do. We have to allow them in certain zones. We can't have regulations that are so far from what a normal residential approval would be. And we've been told that's what you have to do. And HCD has made it clear that there is no way around it where you have to do this.
So, basically, the, the two shelters we have now is not enough. They're wanting more, is what you're saying.
They want the city to provide more opportunities should organizations elect to open those facilities.
So, we just have to allow for them to come in? We don't have to put forth programs to actually implement it ourselves?
We can't stop it.
But we, we can't, we, yes, we have to amend essentially the zoning code to say it's a permitted use, and that's kind of the action that's been taken.
Is there anything good that they're helping us with?
If I can. What about locating next to schools, or preschools, or hospitals, or things of that nature? Or do we have the ability to, to do that, through our role?
Well, I think it would go, I, I think the short answer is no. I don't think we would be able to have those type of separation requirements. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I-
We're extremely limited.
Yeah.
Wow.
I know, right? Is there anything happy you can tell us about this? That'd be great.
You know, I think that we have a great story to tell. We generated one hundred and twenty-seven percent of our RENA. We've contributed to the housing stock in California. Many other cities cannot speak to that whatsoever. The problem that is before us today in the housing crisis is not one that happened in a year, or a decade, or even two decades. It evolved over many decades, and many of our, our friendly cities to the larger, larger cities really have neglected housing for many, many decades. City of Temecula and our surrounding communities have been an enclave for affordable housing. It's why my family moved here, and it's why many families moved here. And unfortunately, the housing, the, the lack of housing has finally caught up to the entire state, and it doesn't matter where you are in the state. Housing is not affordable like it used to be. So, I think the good story here is that we did our part, and we continue to do our part. We've also generated a lot of affordable housing. We have a lot of projects in the pipeline. When you look at the region as a whole, Luke presented on the housing, affordable housing a few months ago to the City Council.
Right.
There's not a city that's doing as much as we are. So, we're taking care of our community, doing our part, but we're in a much larger problem that has been ignored by a lot of other cities for many years. We continue to do our part, and, and we will. But we need help from the other cities to do their part as well.
Right.
I think the other happy news is that we were able to accommodate all the RENA without having to rezone any sites. So, based on our existing inventory, we were able to meet that need, which is not something that I think a lot of cities were able to do.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Brandon, for all your work.
Yeah, once again, I, uh, these questions aren't, aren't directed at you. They're directed at the state, no doubt. And, and I'm sure more and more people with each day, with these, these things that go on, are going to realize what's going on. So, I think that's it for staff. I'm going to open the public hearing now, and hear our speaker. Come on up and state your name. You're by yourself. You don't need to wear your mask there. It's hard to-
Good evening, uh, Planning Commissioners and, uh, city staff. My name is Omar Kobe. I'm not going to take a whole lot of your time. I know there's a lot of people behind me waiting to speak, so. I am a representative. I'm, I'm new to the city of Temecula, but I'm also a representative for the Southwest Carpeters. I'm sure you guys have received that letter, and there's many pages to go through. But one of, one of the main things that's really, you know, I, I usually bring notes up here, but I don't think I need them today. I mean, one of the things that we're fighting for is good wages. Good wages. You know, back when my dad was a carpenter, when he came to this country, there was some good wages in the, in the, in the residential industry. Unfortunately, that ain't the case anymore. These residential developers that come into your city, they build beautiful homes, but their wages are, like, minimum wage. These are, they exploit workers. These are workers that don't have any benefits. They don't have a pension. They don't have healthcare. And unfortunately, what happens is developers know that, and that's how they get cheaper wages. And they're the ones making all the profits on these homes. We know, because we, we go and talk to these type of workers. We're a union organization. Unfortunately, the housing development is in California. There is, there is no union now. It's all gutted by these type of developers. What we'd like to see is for you guys to actually maybe put a contingency stating that, you know, developers coming into your city is going to have a skilled and trained workforce. Because at the end of the day, you know, kids are graduating high school, and where are they going to go? They're all going to go to college and get a hundred thousand dollars in debt, and come out and make minimum wage, some of them. I know, I have a nephew that's in the same, you know, in the same boat. So, I mean, we have to offer other opportunities for our future children. And unfortunately, the construction industry, if, if it's not commercial, and even the commercial industry is getting gutted as well by these, by contractors that don't want to pay a prevailing wage. They don't want to pay a good wage. And it's just not the same anymore. So, you have an opportunity here to stipulate in your housing element, to say, hey, wait a minute, if you're going to come build in our city, why not have a skilled and trained workforce? Why not add that they have to be part of an apprenticeship? Why not add that they have to pay possibly, maybe not a prevailing wage, but, but a residential prevailing wage, which is not, it, it's a decent wage? Why not add that there has to be certified payroll? Why not add, because at the end of the day, the developers are making the money in your city, and, and there should also be a stipulation of what percentage of workers should be local hire. I mean, I've been in the industry for twenty-two years, and I can't tell you how many hours I spent on the freeway driving back and forth to LA. Hours, countless hours, instead of spending the time with my family, I'm spending on the freeway. These are things that, you know, we're fighting for now. And we're a dying breed, you know? Construction industry is, like, in the, in the nation, is maybe ten percent union, the rest is non-union, unfortunately. That wasn't the case forty years ago, and, but, uh, we're fighting to stay alive, and that's why I'm here. Uh, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Omar. Do we have any other speakers?
We do not.
Then I will close the public hearing, and we can talk about it.
So, legally, can we do that, any, that kind of a stipulation in, in the housing element at all?
I think it's, it's something that can certainly be considered. I don't think it would be considered here.
Right.
That's a policy statement that would be determined by the City Council. But I think it's possible. But like I said, that's a decision for the City Council.
I, I think the local hire requirement also would need to be researched. There's some potential implications there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I, I just say, I think it, I think it's worth studying, but I think there's probably a lot of studying, a lot of, a lot of analysis- but I think there's probably a lot of studying, a lot of, a lot of analysis that would need to be done over a period of months to, to really do this justice and, and truly consider it, so.
Yeah, you know, on that particular subject, it may be better that the legislature consider that since they're telling us how to do everything else.
Right.
They could probably do that, so.
And, and, and that's not to say that it has to go into the housing element. It can be a standalone policy. So it doesn't necessarily have to be tied to the process that we're going through now.
And I, I know we can't make that kind of decision tonight, but as far as, I mean, I think it makes sense what he's saying. And so I think it would be something good if we could look at it. So that would be, that's what I think about it.
Well, and I will clarify, that's, that's commissioner's opinion. That's not anything official from the planning commission. So feed, or that's just input for you to take back. Okay, what do we want to do with this? Somebody want to make a motion, somebody not, what?
I'll make a motion and we remove this item, so.
I'll second it.
Okay, the item has been moved and seconded. We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. So we have three to one vote. And if I need any explanation, you probably know what, what's coming. Somebody's got to start. We're not opposed to complying with things, but some of these things are just out of control. And I think Councilman Stewart and Councilman Ron both have stated in previous meetings that basically we have a gun pointed to our head to approve all this stuff. And, and I know the threat is, you know, well, the law says you have to do that. Well, there's a lot of laws that aren't being enforced by the state, by the federal government too. So I don't think this, this will send it to the council where it should go and they can decide what they want to do. But I basically have, have registered a no protest vote in case anybody's curious. And that's that, so. Okay, that takes care of that item. It is approved and forwarded to the city council. Commissioner reports, I'll start on this side this time. My good friend, Lanay.
Well, I just want to congratulate you on being chair.
Oh, thank you.
For twenty-twenty-two and doing a great job. And I have a Q LMP meeting tomorrow night, so I'll report back on that at our next meeting. And I think that's it.
Great. John, nothing?
Just want to state that Monday was a Martin Luther King Day of Service and we had every commission represented, city council represented, and quite a few staff members and their families there. We cleaned up, I think, what every parking lot that the city owned and streets. And then there was a whole group that was at the Gertrude's Trail, which actually I saw being worked on today. And so we have a cleaner city today, so.
Great. That sounds great. Oh, and I have one thing. We have talked in the past when we got our new members last year about our subcommittee assignments. So I'm wondering if in a future agenda, maybe we can just revisit that and maybe go through an exercise that council did last night to make sure that we divvied up the workload and that people are, you know, involved in things that they really have a thing for. Is that possible?
That's coming soon.
Great, thank you very much. That wraps up my report and Community Development Director report. Mr. Watson?
Yes, just really quickly, back in two thousand nineteen, which was like, felt like a decade ago at this point, the city replaced the boardwalks in Old Town. And so we, we took the wood and we kept it and we cut it up and we put it into these little memento with a little plaque on it. And we have a few extra and we want to know if, if you guys want one for your office. It's kind of a cool thing, I keep one in my office. If you want one, let me know and we will get one for you. It's the actual boardwalk, so, and that's kind of a cool, cool deal.
Put us down for five, Mr. Watson.
Sounds good. That's all I have tonight. And Public Works sends their apologies, Ron's out sick, so he wasn't able to join us tonight, so.
Thank you. And with that, we are going to adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, February second, at six o'clock right here in city council chambers. We stand adjourned.